To call this meeting to order, today is Tuesday, July 9th, 2019. And this is a meeting of the Hacienda Community Facilities District. So let's call roll.
Chairman Mangarelli.
Present.
Vice Chairman Orr.
Here.
Board Member Blair.
Yes.
Board Member Good.
Here.
Board Member Lamerson.
Here.
Board Member Shoal.
Here.
Board Member Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
Okay, thank you, and we'll look at a regular agenda, item one, approving the minutes, looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Alright, thank you for that, and then item two.
Public hearing and adoption of budget for Hacienda Community Facilities District for fiscal year 2020.
Thank you, Maureen, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mark Woodfell, District Treasurer. I'm here to bring you the, been in front of you 25 times to bring you the annual budget. This is our 25th. There is only one more budget the district will have to adopt after that, this, and that'll be the 21st. It was formed in 1996, issued a 25-year bond. We've got one more year after the one on the screen to adopt. The main thing we budget are assessments that are paid by the property owners out there, and then we repay the bonds. There is also a small capital project that's been remaining related to some wastewater improvements for that area that is also part of this budget. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions, comments from the council? Any public comment?
No mayor, chairman.
Entertain, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Good.
Mark, this debt will be retired on what date?
July 1 of 2021, which will be a fiscal year 21 budget.
Great, I'm sure they'll all be happy with that.
Any other questions, comments? Entertain a motion.
Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Entertain a motion on the resolution there.
Chairman, I move to adopt resolution number 47, setting the FY '20 budget for Hacienda Community Facilities District.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
This meeting is adjourned. And I'd like to call this meeting to order, today is July 9th, 2019. This is a meeting of the Hacienda Community Number Two Facilities District. Please call roll.
Chairman Mangarelli.
Present.
Vice Chairman Orr.
Here.
Board Member Blair.
Yes.
Board Member Good.
Here.
Board Member Lamerson.
Here.
Board Member Shoal.
Here.
Board Member Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you for that, item one.
Approval of the July 24th, 2018, Hacienda Community Facilities District Number Two minutes.
Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Go ahead.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Okay, thank you, item two.
Public hearing and adoption of budget for Hacienda Community Facilities District Number Two for fiscal year 2020.
Thank you, Maureen, Chairman and members of the board, this is obviously District Number Two. Same thing, it is just a special assessment district left out there. District Two was much smaller than District One, formed in 99, 2000 timeframe. This is, I believe, the 20th budget. It's a 25-year bond, so the final debt maturity is, as I recall, July 1 of 2024. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any specific questions.
Questions, comments from the council? Any public comment?
No chairman.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
And Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 24, setting the FY '20 budget for Hacienda Community Facilities District Number Two.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you for that, this meeting is adjourned. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is July 9th, 2019, this is a Prescott City Council voting meeting. Thanks for bearing with us there, we had a couple of Community Facility District meetings that we had to get out of the way today. Mayor Protem, do you have any announcements?
Yes, I would like to say congratulations to the city of Prescott and our staff for an amazing couple of weeks. The rodeo was tremendous. The mayor ran, you rode in every grand entry, didn't you, parade?
I did, yes.
Yes, are you sore?
No, when you walk on a horse for five minutes.
That's great, and an awesome parade that we had on Saturday, and the fireworks were tremendous over Watson Lake and the fire department, our Parks and Recreations, the streets, everybody did an amazing job. And it was tremendous, very, very proud of our city. So thank you to all staff and to all the citizens and volunteers that came out.
It was a big undertaking, you know, fireworks, first year fireworks, I know Joe Baines and his team worked very hard and a lot of support from all the departments, so we appreciate all those efforts. Okay, we're going to move on to invocation by Pastor Jason Price with Prescott Christian Church, and then the pledge led by Councilwoman Shoal.
Let's pray. General Father, today gathered in this room is a diverse group of people. People with different faith backgrounds, different socioeconomic backgrounds, different political leanings, different political agendas, but we are all gathered here because we share a common love for this city, which we are blessed to call home. And so I want to begin by saying thank you for granting us the privilege of living in this great community and in such a great nation. Lord Jesus, you say in your word that all authority in heaven on earth has been given to you, and your word tells us that no one has authority except that which you have given. And your word teaches us that those who are in authority are servants for the good of those they lead, whether they know it or not. And so today, I want to pray for your servants, whom you've given authority to lead here in Prescott. I pray for our mayor, pray for our Mayor Protem, for our council members, for our city manager, and for those who serve alongside them. I pray that you would give them wisdom to understand the complex, pray you'd give them diligence to pursue justice over expedience. I pray that you would give them boldness to do the right thing even when it's the hard thing. And I pray that you would give them humility to serve rather than to be served. For today, we pray that your will would be done in this city, in this council, and in our lives. And it's in Jesus we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Price. Let's call roll, please.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Shoal.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, would any member like to pull anything off consent? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 6A through 6J.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Alright, let's move on to item 7A, please.
Adopt ordinance number 2019-1675, levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the city of Prescott, subject to taxation, a certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, less the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenue, providing funds for various bond redemptions for the purpose of paying interest upon bonded indebtedness, and providing funds for the general municipal expenses, all for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2020.
Thank you, Maureen. Mayor and council, Mark Woodfell, Budget and Finance Director. This is the last action of a seven-month budgeting process. It is adoption of the tax levy, property tax levy. The public hearing on this was held two weeks ago at the council meeting. Looking at the graph on the screen, you can see our property tax levy, our rate has been going down each year. It dropped another two, looking at a house valued at $200,000, we dropped another $2 this year, down to essentially $52 in assessed levy. The total tax levy is $1,759,908. It goes in the general fund for the general administration of the city. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from the council? You have the tax rate going in the right direction, Mr. Woodfell, it's good. Any public comment?
No mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2019-165.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Alright, we'll move on to item 7B, please.
Adopt resolution number 2019-1706, declaring the document titled Chapter 310. Adopt ordinance number 2019-1676, amending Title III, Chapter 3-10, Water Conservation Code.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, I'm Leah Hubbard, the Water Resource Specialist for the city of Prescott. This is the same PowerPoint that was presented to you on June 11th in 2019 on the Water Conservation Incentive Program update. Just for a refresher, oops. The previous program has been very successful. We've saved over 824 millions of gallons of water over fixture lifetime, which equates to 2,528 acre feet. The gallons per capita per day of the city of Prescott, this is a community-wide gallons per capita per day, has decreased significantly over time. This is due to the conservation program, the tiered rate structure, and fixtures becoming more efficient. So proposed changes, the new rebate program will have a $100 rebate for 1.0 gallon per flush or less toilets. The 1.28 dual flushes will be included in that. And then there will be an additional $50 incentive for septic customers. The smart timer irrigation controllers that can measure weather and are EPA Water Sense approved will be $75 rebate. Rainwater harvesting, the active rainwater harvesting or the cisterns will remain the same at 50 cents per gallon of storage. And then a new passive rainwater harvesting rebate would be added for $5 per square foot of the drainage footprint. And there's going to be a homeowner's guide and a lot of information out there for people who want to install these passive systems or rain gardens. Turf removal has been very successful and is going to be increased from 25 cents per square foot to 50 cents per square foot. And as you can see on the bottom, these are all rebate-specific photos that I've actually taken. So this is the Prescott area. Urinals are going to remain the same at $50 per urinal to try to get the commercial entities more involved in the rebate program. But we will also be rebating the hybrid urinals, as you've seen installed in the city hall bathrooms, or one quart per flush urinals as well. And then washing machines, if you remember, Gary Woodard has actually recommended we add washing machines to the rebate program, based on a very specific list. I have adapted that list from Tucson's based list, it's from the Energy Consortium. And I have that list ready to be posted on the website. And that will be a $200 per washing machine rebate, whether or not you're replacing or you're moving into a new build. Marketing, we are going to really push this rebate program. In the past, we've hit Facebook and press releases, but we're also going to come up with, next slide, an example of a rebate education card that we can target specific people, whether that be unsued neighborhoods, plumbers and landscapers, whichever way we want to target them, we can make these cards to do so. And then on a quarterly basis, we will also be releasing, you know, toilet rebate marketing or whatever marketing we're basing it on for that quarter. And if there's any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you Leah, good presentation. Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good?
As you know, I've been a strong proponent of rebates and conservation utilization for fixtures, appliances, and other effective measures. So I really support virtually all of these rebates. I think increasing the turf removal is a good idea. I think a lot of the early adopters already did that, and we may need to sweeten that to make some of the less early adopters to get involved in the program. However, I do have concerns about this rain garden rebate, which is totally brand-new. This rebate is uncapped and unlimited, other than the fact that each property has a $2,500 maximum rebate during the life of ownership. And with $5 per square foot, I've talked to a couple of the sales managers at the new developments in the city. I've also talked to some of the landscaping people that really work on this passive rainwater harvesting and rain garden projects. From my understanding, a typical small lot, just in the front, would run $2,000 to $3,000 to install a typical rain garden with passive landscaping included. There's not a whole lot of variation depending on the size. Most of this is the labor of bringing workers in, doing the grading, et cetera. So they can do 100 square foot or 500 square foot at nearly the same cost. Consequently, if you take a medium-sized rain garden proposal, about 15 by 15, this would generate potentially an $1,125 rebate, which would pay for as much as 50% of the whole cost of this installation. I'd like to see incentives here, but I don't think the taxpayers should be paying 50% of the cost of a landscaping project that benefits the homeowner in higher value, even though it is beneficial for possibly slowing down erosion, making the water quality better. So I would like to propose that we amend this part of the conservation policy to coincide with the active rainwater harvesting with cisterns. We'll cap it at $500. I'd also like to see the amount per square foot reduced to maybe $3, and then watch and see how effective it is. If it turns out that it's working well, then we certainly have more people that would be eligible for it. When you look at some of the possibilities here, you could have an individual homeowner that would max out their entire lifetime of rebates just on a landscaping project and a couple of other rebates. I'd like to see people be interested in adopting as many of these incentives as we can. That's why I think it's, I'm a little concerned about not having a cap on this. Right now, last year, we spent about $22,000 in rebates and we had a budget of 50. So we have another $28,000 in kind of surplus. But you can imagine at $1,000 or dollars or more per project, we could eat that up very, very quickly. And then we'd have to stop rebates for everyone, for everything. So I'd like to see that start off a little more slowly. And if it turns out that we do need to sweeten it up, just like we did with turf removal, we can always do that next year or the following year, whatever. So I would propose that we cap the rebates on rainwater to $500 per project and limit the rebate per square foot to $3.
Okay, Leah, any thoughts in regard to the rain garden, in terms of how you put this together?
Sure, so I base this program off of a Chesapeake Bay Alliance program that comes from the federal government. They, of course, have a much larger amount of monies and a lot of incentives in that way. And they actually did $3 per square foot of entire treatment area, so that's your impervious surface as well. And so they give about $2,000 for each one of their rebates, but we would be just doing it for the drainage footprint. I've spoken frequently with the environmental coordinator and the stormwater specialist about this. And based on some studies out of the valley areas, it is estimated that this would be a return of $8 per square foot for us spending $5 per square foot, because it's infrastructure that we don't need down the road, if that makes sense. So we require commercial entities to put in structures like this, because they're commercial. But the more we promote with the single-family residential units to do this as well, the less stormwater retention we need in the future. And so it's not just a water quality thing, that's a big part of it too. The nutrients that Matt talks about when he talks about the lakes attach to sediment. And so it blocks the sediment from getting into our waterways, which will increase our water quality in our lakes in the future. So this rebate does look very different than most of our other rebates. Most of our rebates are you buy something and we give you a rebate or an incentive for it. This kind of has a broader implication of the benefits that it could bring to the city, so.
Okay, Councilman Sishka?
Yeah Leah, help me out here. There was something about $200 rebate for a washer?
Correct.
Okay. And I thought I heard that it was for not only switching out an old washer for a new washer, but for new homes also?
Correct.
Why would we give a $200 rebate for a new home washer install?
So I was at the same turning point that you are with it. I questioned heavily whether I should put washing machines as a presentation piece anyways. But Gary Woodard made some very good points, because he's done some very detailed analysis of this in the Tucson area. If a new homeowner, say in one of our new developments, that doesn't have a washing machine, goes out to buy a washing machine and that $200 incentive actually gets them to buy the more efficient machine, then in Gary Woodard's opinion, that's actually more beneficial to the city. So this, I have the list too, it's very specific washing machines.
Let me ask you this. So we're getting all of this water back through the sewer system. So we're getting less water back and we're paying $200 for it with this rebate program. So, help me out here, where are we gaining on this?
By, so the old washing machines are very inefficient for a lot of.
Well, I can see switching out.
Right.
But.
Not in the new ones.
You know, the new ones are a different thing. And my concern is, if every new home that's coming into this area is putting in for a $200 rebate, what does that look like from the standpoint of at the end of the year?
I don't know off the top of my head, it depends on the economy and how many homes are being built. It is a one-time rebate.
Shouldn't that be kind of in the mix, what it's going to look like, you know, from an obligation standpoint by the end of the year?
Depends on how many people apply. Right now, we don't have a lot of interest in the rebate program, we have to keep that in mind. This is to get people excited about it and to get people involved in it. But this is your decision, you could take it off if you don't like the new development piece of the washing machines or washing machines in general.
If in fact, if in fact, it was a situation where in, you know, a new home, or not a new home, but you know, in a septic area, where, you know, it was, you know, we need to have as efficient items as possible in those areas to lessen the rundown of our water system. What, I'm just really confused about why we're doing this for a new home. And, you know, Gary aside, it just doesn't make sense.
And that's understandable, that's why I've been on the fence about washing machines. It's kind of your decision, a lot of municipalities have them on and a lot of them take it off. So it's kind of a single municipality decision.
You know, before I went forward with this, I'd like to find out about what it's going to cost us.
Well, our rebate money is $40,000 per year. We have not reached that since 2009, when we had a full-time water conservationist. And we have been setting aside the 40,000 each year, and on average, give about 15,000 in rebates, and so.
Have we ever had a $200 washer rebate for new homes?
Hmm, I'd have to pull the code, I can't remember, but I don't believe it was for new homes. But we did have a washing machine rebate at one point.
For old homes, I can see old homes, but new homes, you have to buy energy efficient anyway. So why would you give somebody $200 off? I think we just.
Well, we're getting all the water back anyway.
Just stay with older homes.
Well, and it's important to keep in mind, so the lower-end washing machines that these new homes could be buying run, hmm, it depends on the model, of course, about $400 to $600. These new high-efficiency, really good machines can run upwards of $800. So there is actually a difference in the model that we want to see in these new homes as well. The Prop 400 is a big part of these new home builds, a lot of the newer subdivisions are part of that. And so that water goes to permanent recharge, so of course, we want it. But it's not the cycle that we typically see with our water portfolio, that water is going to Prop 400. And so this is all stuff that we want to balance at the same time.
So it's going to self-regulate to some degree, I think, Councilman, because you're going to have to come out of pocket more, even with the $200 rebate on the high efficiency. But I do get your point, if you're already running on sewer, it's all going back to recharge, in-house. Right, whereas septic, then there is a lot of incentive.
Well, that's a real savings.
Right.
If it's a septic situation.
Understood, yeah, that's a good point.
Okay.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, I'm very pleased to see the washing machines on, because I know, if I'm getting a new one, the difference has been huge. I would also, sorry, I would like to see the slide that you have Leah, of how much we're conserving over the years, the bar graph.
The GPCD graph?
That one. If somewhere or another, we could include this in our literature when we talk about conservation and the rebate program. That to me is an incentive in and of itself. So I think we should really use that to educate our public with regard to the rebates. I kind of understand where Councilman Sishka is, but at the same time, we are limited $40,000. And we do want to, people to pay attention, and who knows, maybe we'll go through that this year.
So, just restating that, you have $40,000 set aside annually for any of these programs, right? It's all one bucket, if you will.
Yes.
And you're saying it's been around $15,000 typically that you see used up?
On average, since the 2009, when it was very, very high. And that was, the monetary rebates back then were also very, very high. So that was another factor in that. And if we run out of monies and it is a popular program, that's something that you could readdress too. So it's not just that we'd have 40,000 and then we'd be done. So it just depends on what you want to do as you run your rebate program. Most municipalities run out of money annually.
Okay, any other questions, comments from the council? Is there any public comment?
No mayor.
So we have two things on the table, it feels like the rain garden that Councilman Good brought up, sorry. And Councilman Sishka regarding the rebate on the washing machines. Should we revisit, do you have a timeframe on getting this approved?
Preferably, I would have liked to see it approved to start the new fiscal year.
Gotcha.
That was when our new fiscal year, of course, started for the rebate program. That being said, if you want to table it again, because we tabled it last time, we can. It would just delay rebates, and the longer that we delay rebates, the more the old forms are going out. So I've been trying to collect the old forms, but it's just something we have to keep in mind.
So Leah, this is limited to $40,000?
Currently, yes.
Okay. I did a little study, or a little calculating here, it's 125 new homes with new washers that would be limited to. As long as we're limited to and we want to hit that 40,000, to say we can hit 40,000, then I'm on board with it.
Then you can look at the data, Councilman, after, you know, a year from now, and see what it's doing in terms of the washing machines. In regard to the rain garden.
I'd agree with that reduction.
Yeah, can you restate that for me again, Councilman Good, what you were proposing?
Yeah, I would propose that we cap the rebate per project to $500, which is the same we have for the active rainwater cistern barrel collection. And then reduce the rebate per square foot from $5 to $3, okay? Just those two changes.
Craig, do you have something for us?
Yeah, I was just coming up to kind of, I was making notes to everyone's comments. And definitely, I think Councilman's good suggestion of capping it is a good idea, because this is a potential benefit for water savings. But ultimately, like toilets and things like that, the other incentives that we have, they are a direct benefit to us. Capturing the rainwater harvesting could potentially offset irrigation use, but it doesn't have a direct benefit. So being that it's a new concept and new test, probably would be good to cap it so that we don't use up all of our funds towards that and not have the benefit to continue with toilets. And then to Councilman Sishka, as far as with new builds versus replacements. good questions of us, you know, because yes, that water does come back. So then should we also consider just going with replacements there? And like we have set up for toilets, we're suggesting one rate for sewer customers and another rate for septic customers, because that is a direct benefit to reducing that water usage. We could consider altering wash machines so there'd be a different rate for septic customers, because then that would be a direct reduction in water used that does not come back.
What would you suggest in that regard?
So we're at $200. Maybe we do an additional $50 like we're doing on toilets. So $250 for septic users for replacement washing machines.
I like that idea.
I think I'd stay with replacements, I gotta tell you.
Replacement only?
Well, it seems like so many of the new ones, even, they're still more efficient, right Leah? Yeah.
Correct.
So I would agree with that.
That's what we're trying to do is get rid of the old toilets and the old washing machines. I just think it's wrong to subsidize somebody's new washing machine when the efficiency of them is already being done by the industry.
Understood. So if we amended that one, it would just be for replacement only? Is that understood? I see nodding heads. Okay.
Additional 50 for septic.
Yeah, that's fair. I could see that because we really want to make sure those that are on septic are taking advantage of this. So it'd be 200 for replacement, 250 for replacement with septic. Is that clear? So now we have two amendments, the one I just stated, plus the cap on the rain garden at $500 per project and taking the per square foot down to $3.
I make that motion.
All right.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Thank you, Leah. We got that done. Let's move on to.
Mayor, we still need to actually adopt the resolution too.
Oh, we need to add that?
Yeah.
Well, we can back up and do that.
To me, I move to adopt resolution number 2019-1706.
With the changes that I stated, is that okay?
Sure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Now we are official. Are we on item C?
Adopt resolution number 2019-1714 to declare a public record and adopt ordinance number 2019-1679, amending Title IV, Chapter 4-1.
So on that last, on that last item, do we need two different motions there?
Yeah, that was my concern.
Yeah, don't they need to amend the first motion on the ordinance?
There's two different ordinances.
Or just with the changes?
Your first vote was actually out of order, but not
I know.
Technically out of order, but not in the right order. Your first vote adopted the ordinance.
Correct.
Your second vote changed the language in the code to reflect the ads. So I'm not sure why you don't.
So you actually need a third to declare, to adopt a resolution?
You did though. The resolution.
We adopted number one.
Included the changes.
Okay.
Your ordinance then adopted that.
So you're fine.
Well, because your ordinance included, your ordinance motion included the changes and your resolution motion included the changes. So effectively both included the changes.
Okay.
You only did one.
You did two votes.
You did two.
Okay.
You did, Blair here got out of order.
Okay.
Got ahead of himself.
But that's not unusual.
All right. As long as the attorney has okayed it, we're good.
Tracking it, Maureen?
Sure. She has it.
There you go.
We've got it.
Okay. Now we're on to item C.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mark Woodfeld, City Tax Collector. And today we have updates to our Model City Tax Code. The Model City Tax Code was put together by the cities and towns back in the late 80s. The city of Prescott adopted it in 1987. Through the years, there are amendments to it forced by the state legislature where they want wording changes or individual changes to the tax code that affect particular jurisdictions or taxability on a particular area. We have not adopted any of the amendments that have happened since 2014 because they're mainly just clerical in error. But it is time that we get our code up to date and bring these in. They do not affect the taxability of any items. The taxability of items was determined in 87 when we adopted the code. This is more of just a general housekeeping thing to stay current. There have been, since we put this together, there have been two more sets of amendments that went through the model, the Missile Tax Code Commission, who makes amendments to those. We'll be bringing those to you later this year. And then at the first part of next calendar year, we hope to bring you a way that we can just adopt the model, so your tax code as maintained by the Department of Revenue, so we won't have to do these type of clerical maintenances. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Blair?
Quick question. Before, if I understood you right, before 1986, we were not part of the Model Tax Code?
No, we had our own tax code.
Well, can we get rid of it and go back to that?
No. No, we cannot. That's been preempted by the state legislature and we did it. And we did adopt the Model City Tax Code, was a combination of all those local codes. We had a committee that set of tax professionals across the state and put together the Model City Tax Code. I sat on that committee back in 1986. And we spent a lot of time to come up with a code that would help prevent excuses, I guess, for the legislature to preempt individual cities. And that was the point of putting that together.
Just curious. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right. Thanks, Mark. I'll enter team a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 2019-1714.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2019-1679.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Let's move on to item D, please.
Approval of Granite Dell's Estates, Phases 3 through 5, Amendment of Master Plan, General Plan Use Map, Rezoning and Revised Preliminary Platte.
Thank you, Mayor. This is multi-part amendment to Granite Dell's Estates. I think we're all familiar with the location. It's just south of 89A. That property is currently under development and we're seeing a lot of activity there. As a result of the type of activity, smaller lots, smaller houses, the developer of the property has requested to amend his master plan, amend the general plan designation, land use designation for the property, amend the zoning, and adopt the subdivision platte, preliminary plattes for Phases 3, 4, and 5. So it sounds like a lot. It's almost as complex as the water rebate resolutions. Going to step through real quick the various parts of it and just give you an idea of what we're looking for. So the original master plan for Granite Dell's Estates was amended back in 2017 to change some of the area, specifically these portions. This was Phase 2. And that area was amended to allow for smaller lots that are somewhat like the lots in Phase 1. These are the ones that are building out rapidly. They've started construction in these lots and again, building out rapidly. The proposal is, sorry, as you can see, all of this area were relatively large lots and then very large lots as you moved south and west. The proposed master plan changes a lot of the layout of the lots themselves. You can see they're much smaller lots, almost identical to those that were in Phase 2. It removes a fairly large area of what was under the original master plan, this area, leaving it an unsubdivided tract with no proposed development on it at this point. And shifting most of the density that was here into the remainder of Sections 3 and Phases 3, 4, and 5. And that's to account for the market, which is focused now on lots more like this than like this, which was the original layout. So with that change, ultimately, there's actually a slight reduction in the number of overall lots, down about 40 lots from the original. And associated with that, in order to allow that development, not only do you change the master plan, but you have to change the general plan, which I'm not going to show you a picture of because it's basically the same thing with a slightly different shade of green on it. But you do have to rezone as well. And in this case, all of the area that's shown here currently is a mix of RE2 acre, which are very large, 2-acre minimum lot sizes, and single-family 35, which are 35,000 square foot lot sizes. And the proposal is to reduce that to SF9, which is a higher-density, 9,000 square foot lot size, again, to accommodate these smaller lots. And the final step in the process would be to adopt the preliminary plat for those three phases, 3, 4, and 5, reducing the lots to the size shown on the master plan. So it's in conformance with the master plan, in conformance with the proposed rezoning, and in conformance with the proposed general plan amendment. So a lot of steps and pieces involved in it, but it's a very smooth process from the standpoint of planning. It is trying to meet a market demand. It's an effort to meet that market demand and it ultimately doesn't increase the number of lots in the subdivision. So we generally see that as a positive thing. They're addressing market demands and not increasing the demand on city services. And because it's so many steps, there are four separate motions necessary. We do have a representative of the developer here, I believe Mr. Fan is here, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have on the technicalities of the process. I will point out that Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this and unanimously recommended in favor.
And George, you said it dropped the number by 40 lots?
I believe it's 40 lots, yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Fan, do you want to add anything else to the presentation at this point? Okay. Councilman Blair?
Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea to look at what market's doing. You don't want to build something that's not selling for sure. But my question would be is when we change the master plan and we reduce the size of the project and we end up with an unsubdivided tract, then that undivided tract will have to come back to the city's Water Committee to be watered in the future. Would that be correct?
At the time that that project would move forward, if the property is sold by Mr. Fan to another developer or if he chooses to develop it, yes. It starts the process from scratch, back to you for water, back to P&amp;Z Commission for review of its land use designations, its zoning, and its subdivision plattes.
The reason why I asked that, Mr. Attorney, is that my understanding is, is that when you put water on a development, the water goes with the property. So now by going through the process we're going through with the rezoning, the replating and everything, that removes that water from that undivided property now?
The Granite Dell's Estates has a water service agreement that provides X number of acre-feet, kind of calculated on the number of units that were going to be built. That water, so the water service couldn't exceed that number of acre-feet. I think it was based on old numbers, but be that as it may, the number of units that gets built in there basically uses up the water service agreement allotment. So what's the zoning on the 239 acres?
Most of it would become SF9. So it could allow for the same style of development.
Kind of be aware that the unsubdivided tract, if it's if it remain, if it's SF, what is it now though, if this is approved? Does it go to automatically SF9? It can't be unzoned.
It's part of the rezoning to SF9. So it would be zoned to SF9.
Be aware that 239 acres has zoning that could simply be subdivided and go through whatever water allotment process you know, we, the city has now or will have in the future. But under the current service agreement, this proposal would use up essentially the whole allotment.
Again, I don't have an issue with what's going on here. I just want to make it clear that that water, because it's a block of water moved with the development, and now you just have a raw piece of land that has to start the process all over again. Right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Good?
Well, I just see this as a opportunity to develop many more homes in a much smaller landmass. The current planned area development could have been amended and made smaller lots, if that's what is selling, by increasing open space. Carving out a total 239 acres, it just seems pretty clear that there's an intention to develop this either by the current developer or selling it to another developer. And then we have much, much more home development contributing to more traffic on 89A and I think would disconnect with Walden Farms.
At some point in the future, it will connect westward in that direction.
Which would dump more traffic on 89. So here's again, a development that increases congestion and traffic, but it isn't looked at as what the challenges would be for this extra traffic and congestion. The other concern I have is we have a number of neighborhoods here that only have single ingress and egress, which is a potential problem when you have wildfires and things like that, being able to exit the neighborhoods when you only have one way in and one way out, which as far as I understand, generates a requirement that they all be sprinkled. That's correct?
Yes, sir.
And what is the average cost for sprinkling a new home these days?
That varies depending on the square footage of the home. So it's kind of hard to give a number on it. It also depends on how far away it is from various utilities. Adds about $10,000.
So we're increasing the cost of potentially lower-cost housing. Is it a net zero? Is it an increased cost? I just have some concerns here. I just don't see a real justification why we should improve or allow increased density without looking at the traffic. I would vote no.
George, what is the percent open space in this new proposal?
It's in excess of 35%. With the new layout, it's actually a slight increase over the original.
Okay. 35% open space.
George, didn't you say that there were going to be less lots?
There are slightly fewer lots overall with this compaction of the development into a smaller area. But one of the things that, maybe to mitigate some of the concerns, the density overall within the development stays the same at present until the unsubdivided tract at some point in the future were to develop. Any development of that tract would require basically every approval that you normally give to subdivisions, short of the zoning, for that to proceed. So you would have to approve a master plan amendment or a new master plan. You would have to approve a plat. You would have to approve water service, depending upon how your water policy works out in the future. So there are a number of additional public approval steps that are necessary before additional density could be created within that unsubdivided tract.
Do you remember what Planning and Zoning, if they had any comments on the fact that in a lot of those city streets, there's all just one way in, one way out?
The original subdivision was annexed into the city, was designed and assumed that it would be one way in and one way out until connections east and west could be made. The original master plan provides for a future connection to the east that would connect to either an extension of a roadway to 89A at a proposed interchange at that location. To the west, it would connect to commercial subdivision over here called Center Point East. And eventually here, it would connect westward and at some point, again in the future, cross Granite Creek and connect with Walden Ranch.
So it really wasn't a concern of Planning and Zoning?
It was a concern, but the development was proposed to eventually have all of those connections and that's not uncommon. Having all of the connections immediately is not something that's generally required. The fire department would look at individual sections of development. The fire department would look at individual sections of development, for instance, this one, which is as the original master plan laid out, and say, you only have one way in and out, and you have more than a certain number of homes. Generally, it's thirty or thirty-five homes. And if that's the case, they would say, you have to provide a sprinkler system within each of those homes. Sprinkler systems are becoming far more common even without us demanding them, but in those circumstances, they would have required sprinklers, sprinklers, sprinklers for each of those, those subdivision areas. You have the same situation with this development. You have certain areas that are going to require sprinklers because they only have one way in and out, and they exceed the lot count of thirty or thirty-five, depending on the size of the lots. But you have other areas where there are multiple ways into the individual sections of the subdivision and probably would not require sprinklers. You can get into Phase Four down here from two different locations, and it may not require sprinklers. That will be a call of the fire department at the time of the final plat and the review for the final plat. I would anticipate that they will lean in the direction of sprinklers, because that seems to be a trend, and it seems to be something the fire department has been pushing for a while.
Are you trying to get rid of the fire department?
I'm the planning department. I have no comment. One of the things that we do see, though, with this compaction is there is the potential for a lot of additional density when the unsubdivided portion gets developed someday. And, and that is a good point of Councilman Good. There will be additional density within this large rectangle, which was the original annexed area for Granite Dell's Estates.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, thank you. So George, it was unanimously approved by the commissioners.
The commissions, they, when they were having their discussion, they had a couple of concerns. One, they did ask the question about the additional density and what would happen with that area. They had some concern about no featured connectivity down here that would allow for that unsubdiv, unsubdivided tract to be able to connect internally to these other streets. There were a lot of cul-de-sacs. As that discussion went on, the developer's representative, his engineer, pointed out that there are easement potentials at each of these cul-de-sacs that would allow for future street connectivity, should that be demanded by whatever this development pattern is. So they've made an accommodation to allow for those future connections, should they be necessary. And that was sufficient for Planning Commission to address that concern. So ultimately, yes, they talked about all of those issues and recommended unanimously in favor.
Okay. And again, it is response to the market, as Councilman Blair said. So, okay. Thank you very much.
Did you have something to add to the conversation?
If any questions have not been addressed, I'm available to you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the council? Is there public comment?
No, Mayor.
Okay. At this point, I'll entertain a motion. Looks like you have four different motions here.
Mayor, I move to approve Master Plan Amendment, MPA One Nine Dash Zero Zero One.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes six one.
Mayor, I move to approve General Plan Amendment, GNP One Nine Dash Zero Zero One.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes six one.
Mayor, I move to approve Zoning Map Amendment, PLN One Nine Dash Zero One One.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes six one.
I move to approve preliminary plat, that's easy for me to say. I move to approve preliminary plat, PLN One Nine Dash Zero One Six.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes six one.
All right. Thank you, George. Let's move on to Item E.
Acceptance of Federal Aviation Administration Grant and Arizona Department of Transportation Matching Grant for Design Services of the Taxiway C Relocation Hot Spot Number Three and Four, mitigation and related improvements.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Robin Sabata Airport Director, and I'm here to ask you to accept funds from the federal government. Just as a refresher, on February twelfth, council approved Authorization of Services Number Five to Dibble Engineering to progress on the Taxiway Charlie Relocation Project. That's the major taxiway on the airport next to the major commercial service runway. Needs to be a little bit further out. That project is estimated to come in at about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and this is a request to accept FAA Grant Number Three Zero Four, well, it's Zero Zero Three Zero, Zero Four Zero, twenty nineteen, in the amount of eight hundred and seven thousand dollars, five hundred, I'm sorry, eight hundred and seven thousand, five hundred dollars, and the Arizona Department of Transportation Grant in the amount of twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and the city's share of this is the same, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
All right. Thank you. Questions, comments from the council?
I'll get you.
It's a good return on twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right. We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to accept Federal Aviation Administration Grant Number Three Dash Zero Four Dash Zero Zero Three Zero Dash Zero Four Zero Dash Two Zero One Nine, in the amount of eight hundred, eight hundred and seven thousand, five hundred dollars, and Arizona Department of Transportation Matching Grant in the amount of twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for Design Services of the Taxiway C Relocation Hot Spot Number Three and Four, mitigation and related improvements.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right. Thank you, Robin. Good to see you. Before we adjourn, we have a quote from Ralph Waldo Emerson. People only see what they are prepared to see. This meeting is adjourned.